Well, maybe we'll get going. If everyone can grab a seat.
Somebody who's been following it for a long time.
Exactly.
What?
She's opinionated.
Do you want to close?
They're just rehearsing.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, we'll get started. And so on the agenda, the first item is call the meeting to order, which I will do. And welcome, everybody here. Thank you for being here at our regular meeting. And roll call, I think we're missing Michael Beers.
I'm sorry.
Oh, wow! You sneaked in there. Sorry. And so it's just trustee Dugger and trustee McDonald, I think, are the only two.
And trustee Breckstad.
And trustee Breckstad. That's why, because trustee Breckstad usually sits in that seat and has flannel shirts on. So you tricked me, trustee Beers.
I actually gave out a lot.
I bet you do. Okay. And so number two on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. So if we can stand up and start the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. And did all trustees get a copy of the addendum to the agenda and the attachment, which is the actual 2017 ballot? Okay?
Not the attachment, but the...
I meant the additional addendum that identified this as an additional item we'll be discussing tonight. Yes, thank you. Yes.
He didn't realize there was an attachment.
The ballot?
It's on the back. Okay. So does everyone have the agenda and the additional item for the agenda? Okay. So are there any requests to modify the order of the agenda? Seeing none, then we'll go with the agenda as it has been printed. So the next item is number four, and typically this is when we approve minutes. Since we're in the process of having a new secretary, she and I are working on reviewing the minutes. And I've been a little under the weather, so I haven't gotten to them yet. So we will have the minutes for last meeting and this meeting at the next meeting. So that's why there's no minutes, because typically there are. Next one is number five, public comment or correspondence on non-agenda items. So this is an opportunity for anyone who wants to bring anything to the attention of the district that would fall underneath the decision-making power of the board to our attention. And it's an item that's not going to be discussed on the agenda, so there won't be a discussion by any of the trustees, because we have to notice up any items that we're actually going to discuss under the Open Meeting Act. But if there's something you want to bring to our attention, it may become an agenda item in the future, or at least may be addressed internally by administration. So we'd love to hear from you. So any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll move on to 6A, which is the student trustee reports. And we've got two trustees here and perhaps Cee Lee Swann.
I'm waiting.
Okay. So if, Maureen, if you want to start?
I'm working on it.
Okay, that's great.
I had a new prompt to the one that I came up with 10 minutes before, but I did that too.
Okay.
So at Hellgate, Thanksgiving break was great. Much-needed little rest things, great. Moving on, second thing, our assembly went great on the 21st. This was a makeup for our Spirit Week Assembly, because we didn't have one, because we didn't have a gym. Thus, we had an assembly the 21st of November, celebrating fall sports and their accomplishments, and also double-A band, choir, and orchestra, which I emceed with my good friend Olivia Panarella. Item number three, auditions for Hellgate's Thesscon play is this Thursday, which is written by our very own Laramie Dean. It is the Gorgon Sisters and has received many awards. Fourth item I have is swimming and wrestling and all winter sports like basketball have started, obviously. And last but not least, the first high school swim meet of the season will be this Saturday in Kalispell. That's all I have. Thank you.
So now we move on to announcements from superintendent Thane.
Thank you. Just calendar announcements, for the most part. We will have the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, December 12th at 6:00 PM in this room. We will then, in December, of course, enter our winter break, and students will be out of school December 22nd until January 2nd. The second regular board meeting, which would normally be held December 26th, is canceled, so we'll meet only once in December. And school will resume Tuesday, January 2nd, with our next regular board meeting then being Tuesday, January 9th at 6:00 PM. One other note, trustee building visits continue and will be scheduled for Thursday, June 11th, beginning at 9:00 AM to tour both Sentinel...
Or January, excuse me.
Maybe June.
Maybe June.
January 11th to begin at Sentinel High School at 9:00 AM, followed by Big Sky High School. And we hope that trustees can put that on their calendar, and we'll send calendar appointments.
Thanks. And now is the time for any announcements from any trustees? Any announcements from anybody? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda are items that we see on a regular basis that are dealing with perfunctory routine matters, and we can put them on the consent agenda per our procedures, which means that there won't be board discussion. There's always public comment, and any trustee who would like to have a discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda can ask to have them come off the consent agenda. So at this point, there hasn't been a request to take them off. So there are two items. One is to approve an out-of-district attendance agreement. There is one found on page 5. And the second one is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports from October 2017. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Kendall and seconded by trustee Wake. And as I indicated, we won't have any board comment, but if there are any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hands. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to 8B1, which is to approve the name of the replacement school for Cold Springs, which I guess Cold Springs is going to stay Cold Springs, and the new school needs a new name. And so as background information, superintendent Thane, I could summarize it, but do you want to go ahead and just explain the process again?
Sure. I will. Thank you. As you know, we asked the Cold Springs community to submit suggested names. We had over 40 names submitted. The EIT then called it down to five that were put out for survey among the student population, as well as the Cold Springs area households. That information was presented to you on the 14th of November. One of the things that was an outcome from the meeting on November 14th was a direction from the board for me to reach out to the family, and I was able to identify a grandniece. She's the granddaughter of Jeanette Rankin's older sister. I reached out to her, had a call with her, as well as her husband. They then reached out and emailed the family, all the relatives they could identify, and got in touch with me to say that the family would be ecstatic if, in fact, that were the name that were chosen. And in fact, they identified that if, in fact, that's the board's pleasure and the board takes that action, they would be interested in participating in a dedication ceremony when that occurs in the fall. So you have before you tonight an agenda item that does not have an administrative recommendation, just as was true when we administered the survey. We've been clear all along that naming the new facility is the board's prerogative. You had five names that made it through the EIT process. They're all good names. Two of them are specific geographic recommendations, Maloney Ranch Elementary and Miller Creek Elementary. Two represent, I think, just generalized geographic, Three Rivers Elementary School and Mountain View Elementary School. I might note there's already a Mountain View Elementary School in Missoula. It's a private school on Spurgeon Road. And then, of course, Jeanette Rankin Elementary School is the fifth. So the board could choose any or none of those if you have other suggestions. So with that, by way of background, I turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Thanks. And so now is the time to ask for any trustee who wants to make a motion to... Before we can have discussion, we need a motion on the table. So if anyone would like to make a motion as to what the school that will be built in the Maloney Ranch area should be named, trustee Lorenson?
I move that we name the new school the Jeanette Rankin Elementary School.
And everybody else at the table, but we'll write trustee Kendall down. And now we have a second motion on the table, so is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
I just want to say that I think this process has been really handled well, from as far as I can tell, in terms of gathering information from lots of people who had lots and lots of really great ideas. And I particularly appreciate that the community, as well as the current school community, were all involved in that. I did share that this decision was happening tonight on my... I have a Facebook page where I update people about school board news, and did receive a fair number of comments there, all of which were very positive and supportive of this particular choice. I had shared the results of the voting there as well, so I'll add that into the mix.
Are there any other board discussion? Trustee Smith?
Oh, no, I was just turning it over to you. Thanks. I just want to say that I was real happy, not only with the process, but with the results of the poll. I guess I've... The Jeanette Rankin, the name, that I think is appropriate. It fits well with not only the school, but the town. And I think it's a great opportunity to highlight Ms. Rankin. She's an amazing person. I've actually started to learn a little bit more about her. A friend of mine wrote a book and just got into the beginning of it, so I can't speak at length about it, but I'm just really happy with the selection, or the recommendation, I guess, is what it is.
Any other board discussion? I guess I'll just say, having grown up in Butte and being reminded that Mike Mansfield was the person who took her place in Congress, even though she was a lifelong Republican from Montana, she worked well across the lines. But one of the most telling comments that I have read about her in reading biographies about her is the thing she was proudest of was, one, being from a state that allowed women to be elected to Congress much earlier than it was nationally allowed, and, two, that she was the only woman in Congress who was able to vote as a congressman to allow women to vote in the United States. And she thought that was one of her proudest accomplishments, so just wanted to add that in. So I think that, especially if this inspires students to learn more about the history of, you know, people in Montana who've made a difference in the world, I support this decision as well. And any other board comments? Then we'll... We did hear from two students at the last meeting, and they're very, very eloquent in terms of explaining why they supported this decision, so we can see that they're back again tonight. So we thank you for caring about this particular issue. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, then we have a seconded motion. All trustees in favor of naming the school to be built in the Maloney Ranch area, Jeanette Rankin Elementary School, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is...
It's an elementary option.
Oh, right. Thank you. And so elementary only, which means Ann and I don't vote. And so it is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Thanks. Thank you. And now we'll go on with the rest of our meeting, which is a little more boring than how exciting that was. And you're welcome to stay if you want to learn about the ordinary things we discuss occasionally. So C1 is Smart Schools 2020, and I'm going... I understand that I get to ask Ray for an update, because I was part of the selection process for the wide-area network, whole fiber optic redo that the district was doing, and I would love to hear how that's been going.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. The fiber-wide area network is fully operational district-wide, which is excellent news. I'd like to say thank you to Hatton and Russ for all of their hard work in implementing that. So now we're in the commissioning phase. And so Hatton and I, along with some other team members, went around to every single fiber handhole and inspected the connections. Luckily, it wasn't too cold outside when we did that. And then we're working with the vendor. They have gone through the inside plant punch list. They've done the outside surface restoration. And now the vendor is working on the wireless WAN system, which is a backup failover system. And I'm hoping that that will be wrapped up by the end of the year so that full commissioning can be complete.
And Burley, anything else to add about how things are going with everything that's going on? We heard a pretty exhaustive list at the last meeting.
I'll be real quick, other than to say, we are kind of going through the process. We're sledding architects now for... Or we have sledded architects now for Lewis &amp; Clark, Hawthorne, and Meadow Hill, and there's only two remaining. So we have Big Sky and Porter left, so it kind of gives you an idea of that we're there. You can't see the light quite yet, but it's coming. So that's all I have to share tonight.
Thanks. Then we... Any... Have any questions? It's information-only, but any questions or any public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
I just had a question specific to Hellgate and the construction there. With, like, classes being disrupted, I know that's just like not a, like, thing that, like, you guys can control, and that's just going to be like a thing. But is there, I don't know, like, any, like, notice that we could get in advance of, like, when that's happening or where construction is happening? Like, I don't know, just getting more clear communication? I don't know if that's just administration, or if that's like, I need to go talk to Mr. Miller about that. Is there anything I could do? Because I feel like there's a lot of frustration in the student body within that.
Yeah, so we have weekly meetings that discuss kind of program or constructions going forward throughout the next week or so, and we can... We'll work through that communication. I think that that needs to be better. We have no problem making sure administrations and myself as well, making sure we'll get something out to you guys to let you guys know if there's going to be large impacts in the building.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Ray or Burley? Seeing none, then we move on to a topic that's pretty related, which is to authorize engagement of Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary Architects. It's an elementary item, and the recommendation is to hire CTA architects, engineers, to assist in the programming, planning, design, and construction for the renovation and construction of Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary, subject to successful negotiations of a contract. Burley, do you want anything of note? We've now, I think, fairly familiar with the process that's involved in coming up with the recommendation by the administration. Anything you wanted to add?
Only that I want to thank the committee, which was superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, Julie Robitaille, and Principal Susan Anderson, and to thank Jackie Bull from CTA for being here tonight, and we're looking forward to the project.
Thanks. Any questions for Burley before I entertain a motion? Is there a motion from an elementary trustee to authorize the engagement of CTA architects as the architect who will be handling the renovation and construction of Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary? Moved by trustee Lorenson. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenson?
I'm just really excited that CTA got Lewis &amp; Clark, because I think that's where kind of where the ideas began four or five years ago, talking in general with CTA, who led our process, and a lot of discussion around Lewis &amp; Clark. So I'm just excited that they're going to be the architects on that project.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Oh, sorry. Trustee Smith?
I'm just going to abstain or refrain from voting for the same reason that I always do.
And so the right word is, I think, abstain, because you can choose to abstain, but yeah, there are certain legal parameters under which you have to recuse yourself, and you don't fall under any of those, but nonetheless. Okay? And so with that, is there any public comment? Is there a public comment over that way? No? Okay. You were busy...
I was anticipating.
Okay. Any... No public comment then? Okay, then all elementary trustees, with the exception of trustee Smith, who is abstaining, who are in favor of the motion to engage CTA architects as the firm that will handle the renovation and construction of Lewis &amp; Clark Elementary, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trust... Elementary trustees present, with the exception of trustee Smith, who abstains. Then we move on to D, which is personnel. And a first topic is one that we see pretty much around this time of year, which is to approve an incentive for early notification of retirement, which is an incentive so that there can be better planning in the budgeting process. So Dave, if you want to make any, you know, any highlights or anything we need to know about this year's recommendation?
I will. The... Exactly what you said, it not only helps with budgeting, but it also allows us, more importantly, to... The sooner we know about who's retiring, the more it helps us with staffing for the next year. We do staffing decisions in March, and then we do the arenas in April for hiring. And so knowing what positions would be available allows us to have jobs offered to people. So it runs from December 1st through February 28th, and I actually looked up the numbers because I was curious. Last year, we had 19 certified staff that took advantage of it, and only four retired after... Retired after the February 28th. Classified, we had pretty much a mix. It was eight that did yes and 11 that went no. And that's just, you know, decisions are made at different times regularly for classified staff.
Any questions for Dave before we have a motion? Trustee Newbold?
I just had a question about how the $500 figure gets determined or decided.
I think we've just budgeted that out for quite a few years, and that's been the number that we've used. I'm sure that a higher amount would be nice, but I do know that it does make a difference. We do have people that wait until that December 1st date to take advantage of the incentive.
Did you?
Yeah, just as a follow-up, I would say again, we use the term incentive. We should probably say approval of stipend for early notification. It's not intended to be retirement incentive. It's really intended for those staff members who know they will be retiring at the end of the year to notify us early so we can begin that staffing process, as Dave described. We know that $500 will not induce anyone to retire. It's not going to make an economic impact on their retirement long-term. But it is very helpful for us if we can identify those positions by February 28th.
Thanks. Any other questions? Trustee Lorenson?
I guess, same question Jennifer had, and my question is, seems like spending $500 for a long time, and shouldn't it be adjusted for inflation each year? Like, you know, are we going to one day jump to 1,000?
Pat? No. I wouldn't see us doing that. There may be some adjustment, I would suspect, in the future, but I think, as Mark just said, it... We all can recognize that a long-term teacher isn't going to decide to retire just because of $500, because it's also... We take deductions out of that as well, so... But it does... People do look forward to it. It helps speed the process up. It gives us early notice, and the early notice is extremely helpful for us as a district in making budgeting decisions and making staffing decisions, so it is a good thing.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then is there a motion from a trustee to approve the... I'll change the language to a stipend of $500, less appropriate deductions, for early notification of retirement, so that the notification is received in the Human Resources Office no later than February 28th at 4:00 PM? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? I guess I'll agree, maybe we can up it a little bit next year, just so it, you know, provides maybe a little bit more incentive for early notification. Any public comment or any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve a stipend of $500, less the deductions for early notification, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as all trustees present, and thanks, Gabby, for being here. And then we move on to number two, which is to approve the first reading of a new board policy, 2145 Suicide Awareness and Prevention. And so Megan, can you walk us through this, since it looks... One of my questions was whether or not this language was crafted by your office, or is it somehow mandated by statute?
I would answer both. Yes, we crafted this language, but it's based upon statute, a newly adopted statute from the 2017 legislature. Previously, suicide prevention and response programs were voluntary, but the legislature now mandates that they be required in all schools. However, the curriculum is actually based upon what OPI develops, so... And they're just now coming out with information, I think.
I would just piggyback on that by saying, again, House Bill, I think it was 381, is what compelled us to consider adding board policy. This is an area of significant interest to the district, and as you know, we've endeavored to take on staff training in particular. We did staff training, thanks to Health Department and Heidi, on QPR for all staff members last year. We have also done assist training for selected staff members, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, et cetera. And we're doing training on signs of suicide. And we have coordinated with Carl Rosten at the state. Again, as Megan referenced, the state is still working through at OPI curriculum adoption, but we have determined that those are the resources the state has provided us to date. Elise and her team have worked with the health enhancement teachers, grades seven through 10, or six through 10, I believe, and on curriculum implementation and on a mental health screener. And counselors also, thank you. So we're engaged in this process. The policy will compel us to formalize our procedures in that regard, which we will do. And of course, Carol Ewen has helped coordinate that effort on behalf of the district.
Any questions? Trustee Decker?
So I guess my only... I'm glad that we're doing this, and I'm glad the legislature did it, and that's all good. I'm just... It seems like we've had a couple times over the past year or two changed policies in order to stay in tune with what the legislature has done or new changes and things, and so I'm wondering about the second-to-last sentence and whether that's something that really needs to be there? Because if we... That just seems really specific, and we may find ourselves changing that. Just wondering. Because policy should be pretty general, and then that, like, how we're actually doing it might be more specific and be a procedure. Just a question.
Actually, that is the requirement, according to statute, that we make available two hours of training for every staff member, a minimum of every five years.
I guess what I'm wondering is if we say that we will have a program that's in compliance that covers us in the future, whether or not they change what that is?
I think that that change could certainly make sense. It reflects the current law, but you're right, we have had to change policies based upon of... updates in the law. So I have no objection, but I'm, I think that that would, the process then, it would go back to a first reading, I think, the next month. Is that, just you're right, you could just reference the law, just saying it will comply with Montana law, but it would be up to this board to make that decision.
I would fully support that modification that trustee Decker mentioned. And I guess my question relative to that was going to be, and I think Mark may have touched on this a little bit. Do we have a timeframe to come into compliance so that, or have we been working toward this minimum training schedule so far?
Technically, we would be in compliance, having trained all staff members last year. The area that would be of concern to us is making sure that it's sustainable as we bring new staff members on board. So we need to be very intentional about training that we provide to new staff members. And as I referenced in a meeting with Chair Holland earlier, we have a whole list of required trainings, everything from bloodborne pathogens on down. And so making sure that we have appropriate time and that staff has the appropriate time to devote to that training will be critical.
I see. And I doubt that the statute has mentioned the, how long you have to get that, to bring a new hire into compliance. Is that even mentioned in there? Does, no, it's just when they look, if it's not checked, if that box isn't checked, then we're in trouble.
This particular statute is pretty short. It doesn't go into, it doesn't, it just requires you to have the program. So that said, I, Mark's correct in that you're compliant as far as providing training, but it is a matter of providing training on an updated basis for new staff. If the board is interested, I was just working on some language, and so what I would propose is that the policy read in that second to last sentence, "The training shall be made available annually, but employees working directly with students are required to participate in the minimum training required by law."
I like that.
I have, I mean, that was one of my questions, which is why I was asking about how much flexibility we had in terms of what is required. And the other thing that I didn't get a chance to look at carefully, but in the first paragraph, it says, "The board directs the superintendent or designated to develop a program and procedures," but we've already got one in place, so it sounds like it hasn't happened yet, but it has happened. So is that standard language that even though they've already done it, we're directing them to make sure that they kind of really did it?
It is standard language. Certainly, we can change it, but it's just an ongoing requirement for the superintendent to ensure that there's a program and associated procedures for the prevention, assessment, intervention, and response to suicide.
So I guess if, if we're making changes, that the board directs the superintendent or designated to develop and maintain the program, so that once it's developed, then it seems like it's important to maintain it? Because this makes it sound like the district's been doing nothing yet, and we have been. But I see the point you're trying to make. Is that okay with folks? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, I guess I don't like the law, you know, shall comply with the law language, because we could always go above and beyond the law. And I think that if we, if the law changes and we have an opportunity to address this policy in public again, it's really an opportunity. I think this is something we just need to talk about every chance we get. So I would be, I would prefer, I guess, to see the language remain as it is. And if the law does change, we would just talk about it again, just.
I guess I'll ask administration or anyone who's in the legislative process, is there any sense that there's discussion going on to raise the requirements for the training hours? I mean, two hours of training every five years? It's not much.
I would, I would just say that in response to trustee Lorenzen, this does establish a minimum. I would hope that we would certainly pay more attention to this pressing issue than simply two hours of required in-service every five years.
I was just going to add that I believe this issue, as far as suicide prevention from a legislative standpoint, has only really come up in the past two sessions. I believe that training requirement or suggestion, as it was in that first session in 2015, that's where that language came from. So I don't think that actually changed in the 2017 bill. It's possible that they may address it, but I guess my point is, is that the legislature's only now, I guess, becoming interested in this subject. So it wouldn't surprise me if it comes up again in 2019.
I have a few things. I'm also really happy about this, and I'm really glad that the legislature recognized this. And we have been doing a great job in MCPS, and that's something we can really be proud of. But I do have a few questions, and I, I like your point, Chairman Holland, about develop and maintain. That seems like a really good idea. And I do also like the idea of going beyond what's required by the state, because we can do better than that minimum, for sure. And one of the things I'm wondering about is if we can make it clear that the training is available to other folks as well. It says, "Provide training to administrators, support staff, other school staff. The training shall be made available annually. Employees working directly with students are required." But could we make it available to people like coaches, who have a lot of interaction with students and may be able to pick up on, on signs that, that a student is struggling with depression or some other suicidality? And it also makes me think that if, if there is some way that we could make it available to bus drivers as well, and I know they're not employees of the school district, but they do have a lot of interaction with students as well. And then even making it available to parents. One of our schools is offering a series of suicide prevention classes to, that's being open to parents in the evenings. And that is absolutely something that we should try to, to get on top of and offer because, parents, I mean, we're getting at the kids, we're getting at the teachers, the administrators, the counselors, but the parents really should be learning about suicide prevention as well. It's really sad to hear from people who have lost a child say, "I wish I had known." And I know that this is going beyond what the, what the legislation requires, but if there's some way we could make clear that this is something that we, we will make available to the entire MCPS community, including parents and guardians, I think that would be a huge improvement. And working with the county and Project Tomorrow Montana, which is a coalition that is being organized by United Way of Missoula County, we can, we can do so much. And is there a question there?
I think, well, I think there is a question.
If we can make those changes, that would be, I would, I think that would be great.
Megan, what is your thought? Or did you want to say something?
I would just say that certainly as we develop procedures, I think that's where we articulate those kinds of things. And I would just add that we had conversation about this draft policy at Cabinet, and one of the concerns is it talks about staff that has direct contact with children, but we also talked in terms of classified staff and people that you may not think as having direct contact with children. And I think we want to be as all-encompassing as possible. And so I think what you've indicated here is instructive, as we do create our procedure statements, and certainly will encourage school communities to engage the parents and any of the other interested people, daycare providers, et cetera. I just think the more you can get the word out and the more opportunities there are for community-wide training, the better off we'll be.
I just want to piggyback on, on this. I think the, I really think.
Let me just clarify. Right now, we're asking questions. Can we? Because we don't have a motion.
Okay.
So more discussion happens after the motion has been made.
Okay, okay.
But if you have any questions for Megan?
I was just.
Yeah, I think Megan was asking a question, is that can we make this stronger? Is, so we're cautious, but do we know what the motion's going to be? Is it being adopted, or is it being presented back in traditional language? And so that, that's, I'm not sure what direction the board wants to go in this.
And I would just add, that was exactly what I was going to respond, is we will do, we're happy to do whatever the board wishes. This is your policy. This is the point of the first reading, is to have these discussions. So we're happy to do whatever the board directs us to do.
So insofar as this is a policy that we've started framing because it's now required by legislature, as a board, we could go further. I mean, our policies are where we make statements about our values and our goals in the district. And so it's, from that perspective, we're not only required to include what the legislature wants us to now include in terms of a training program, but we can say more things in our policies about how we, as a district, approach this entire issue. Is that correct?
Yes, you can't change what's minimally required. You can't go lower than what the law requires, but this board absolutely has the authority to require more than what the law requires.
So I guess just in, just kind of thinking out loud in terms of summarizing the questions, there's one suggestion to take out the specific minimums, which is two hours of training every five years, and use more general language. There's an alternative suggestion that since that is the current law, make it clear we're recommending minimal, or we want, have minimal compliance, but I hear there's a suggestion that we want to be able to say we can do more. And so would you and your office be able to craft a policy that adds some flexibility on that second to last sentence?
If that's what the board wants, absolutely.
And so I guess, and the other thing that I hear in terms of the questions is, is there a way to expand who has, to whom we make available the training, so that it can be made available to not just what might be required by statute, but custodians, bus drivers, coaches, parents? And we would have that ability to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So does that summarize the question? So trustee Kendall?
I do have one other question that's along those lines, and it has to do with who, who may be at risk of suicide. And it, I know that the, the legislation is in particular concerned about students, but there are other people in the community, in the MCPS community, who are not students, who could also be at risk. So I wondered if we might, since the district will provide a comprehensive suicide education program, could that be so comprehensive as to include other people at risk of suicide in the school district, not just students? That's in the second paragraph, third line down. It says specifically there, "In responding to students at risk of suicide." And the first line of the, of the policy is "All district students." And then the second sentence in the first paragraph ends in, "And respond to suicide." And it doesn't specifically say students there. But I, I'm just trying to think if there is a way that we can make clear that even though the legislature is concerned about youth suicide in particular, that suicide affects all ages, and we have a whole bunch of employees in the school district and families who are, you know, part of it. So is there some way we can broaden it a little bit? Students and other community members or something?
I think part of the limitation is that this would go into that policy under student instruction, and it's tied into curriculum development. And so there, there's another policy that I'd like us to take a look at too, which has to do with guns in schools, because our policy addresses what happens with students with guns in schools, but it doesn't talk about employees and parents with guns in schools, in part because it's in the student instruction. So it has to do with what kind of penalties might be assessed for students. And so I asked the superintendent and Megan's office to look at that policy as well, because it has broader implication too. But is that going to be a limitation in terms of, if we include language about parents and staff here, when you're looking to see what we're doing for parents and staff, you'd probably not look under student instruction. And so is it either possible to pull this out so it's in some more general policy about health and well-being in the district? Or, you know, in which case I think we could expand it or create a parallel policy when we're dealing with staff and stuff? I don't know. Megan, do you have any thoughts?
One of my concerns, and it's partially because we mentioned OPI is still in the process, is that OPI's program materials are going to be focused on students, and that's what this is all designed to be geared around, is students. Not at all disagreeing that you're right, there are larger issues. So that's one of my concerns, which is why it's part of the student instruction section, is because it is a curriculum-based prevention and response model. The other issue is I think that the tools are going to be a little bit different. Again, not to say that, that it's not a concern, but I think that potentially in other areas of the policy manual, it could be addressed, but I wouldn't necessarily focus those other issues in this particular policy.
Any other questions, trustee, or superintendent thing?
I would just respond by saying, again, when we develop the procedure statement, although the second sentence of the second paragraph is specific to providing training to administrators, support staff, and others, and does reference specifically students, I think that we would want to generalize the training to include not only students but staff that might be at risk. I think that's an excellent comment. And certainly, the training that we provide, whether it's QPR, signs of suicide, whatever, would be applicable to staff, but I think that should be clearly referenced.
And so Megan, do you think, is there a policy that deals with mental, mental health wellness for staff, that we could add a policy? I mean, it wouldn't be mandated by statute, because as you pointed out, the legislation is focusing on students and curriculum development. I, I'm just thinking, if, if we put it in here, does it, does it reach the audience we want it to reach, and does it have the force of policy that we want it to have when we're, we're categorizing it as student instruction?
So one of the issues when you're dealing with suicide is, the question that often comes up is, could this have been prevented? And liability that can be attributed as a result of that. The good news about this student policy is that there, although the statute doesn't say a lot, there is actually a liability exception where they, they can't bring suit for failure to stop it for a student. There isn't a corresponding immunity for employees. And so again, I'm not trying to say that it's not an issue, but I think we have to be really careful about how we address it. And I think it's something that we would like to take a look at more before we come back as far as saying, here's a policy that it could be added to. I just think, like I said, I think we have to be careful in how we deal with it.
Just superintendent thing?
And I would just add that our immediate charge is to deal with the student perspective and make sure that we have that piece solidified. That doesn't in any way prevent us from addressing through other means, whether it be policy, procedure, or just staff education, the staff piece.
And any more questions? Trustees?
Just a procedural question. If we, if we have any suggestions to changes, or in this, does that have to happen before the motion? Or are we?
I guess the possibility of motions are to send it back for revision, so that the only motion would be that taking all the suggestions that have happened at the table, legal counsel would take them into consideration and revise a draft for us to see, so we wouldn't actually be adopting the policy on first reading, because the policy's language hasn't yet been clarified. Otherwise, the alternative motion would be if there's clear. Otherwise, the alternative motion would be, if there's clear amendments that everyone can agree upon, then we can approve the first reading of this policy. I'm sensing it might be better to go the former way than the latter way, but-
That, that leads directly, I think, to my question. So if, if we want to, for instance, one of the things that has been brought up in the question period is minimum of two hours, minimum of meeting the law, or above and beyond two hours, and set, set our own minimum, whatever that may be, or maximum, or however we want to do that. Can we have that as a discussion and then send it back? Or do we have to have a motion before we have a discussion for that? And the only, I just want to make it clear for, for Megan, if it does go back that first way that you said, that she knows, that she has some direction. So I want to make, I don't want to, I don't want to have to go through this again.
Typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, legally, the, before the Board can discuss anything, we need to have something before us as a proposal to discuss. So if anyone wants to make any kind of motion at all, this, you know, comes with the recommendation to take some kind of action, but I'm open to any suggestions as to a motion. As long as there's no more Board questions, then I would entertain any motion, or-
I was actually, while you were talking, I pulled up the statute. The training, and I knew that, I just couldn't remember it off the top of my head. It's actually a recommendation. It's not even a requirement.
Okay.
It's a recommended training every, I think the reason why that's in there that way is you already had a policy that adopted a training protocol for staff. So I think that's why it says shall. You, you already said you were going to do that. But it's actually a recommendation, not a mandate. I don't know if that changes the discussion, but wanted to share that. As far as how to proceed, you can certainly move to adopt the policy as written, adopt the policy as amended, or, or I guess move forward as recommended, move forward with, with the adoption, or with the revision. Or you could just send it back to the administration, in which case we would look at the various issues that you've raised and then come back to you with a revision.
Is there a motion or a question? Don't know what your hand was up?
Yes, I was, I think it was kind of a question. Does the administration, I mean, do we, do we, do we have to have a dosage of training in our policy? Or is that something that could be left to the education experts who know what best practice is in this area, in communication with health professionals, et cetera? And clearly making it clear that we will, you know, certainly never go below the state requirements. However, our, our Board directs the administration to provide a, aggressive is the wrong word, but you know what I mean, like a strong training program for staff. And then that would be something, the, the having of a dosage in there seems like a, it's overly specific to me still, not that, I would never obviously want to say that we wouldn't. Done.
Sure.
You know, I look through the policy manual on occasion, and I see policies that were oftentimes adopted many, many years ago. And I would suggest that as an administrator, I think it is important to identify that training shall be made available annually if we're going to specify anything with regard to training. Because 10 years, 15 years from now, somebody might not think, oh, we don't need to do it this year. Or they might think that, you know, we're sufficiently trained. And I think this is significant enough in importance that making available annual training is critical.
So anyone have a motion or more questions? Okay.
I move that we ask that our legal counsel and our administration revisit the policy in light of the comments that have been made and further comments that might be made during the discussion portion.
Is there a second? Second, am I trustee's here? Now we can talk about it. So trustee McDonald, did you have something you wanted to say?
I just wanted to make comment to that. I think that it would be very important somewhere. I don't know where it would go in, or if it's already in there or thought about. But I think that it is very, very important that there is a protocol of addressing parents when their child is, is of question to any of the administration. Mark and I've had this conversation. I kind of experienced a situation just this past year, and I was just there, I was just looking for the protocol of the reaching out to the parents and how that should be addressed in the protocol of that. And that kind of would go in hand in hand, sort of with bringing the parents in and providing education for the parents and the students.
Any other?
Yeah, I, I want to touch on the, the minimum training of hours and stuff. I want to make sure that the direction that I give to our legal counsel is understanding that, I can't ask questions now. But, but understanding that this is, like you said, it's a recommendation, and it's a, it's a policy that we already had and that we already have. I want to make sure that A, that whatever we put in there as a minimum is stressed, A, that it is a minimum, and we do and we should and we could go above it. But also that, I don't want to, one of the things you had said a little while ago about liability and opening up to liability by expanding the scope of the statute. And I don't want to open us up to liability by saying we will do something, I don't know if that's going to introduce more liability, but be conscious of that as you, as you, as you author that, I guess would be my recommendation. Is that relatively clear? Megan, thanks.
Any other Board discussion? I just have a couple of thoughts. So I guess my specific thoughts are to expand it to say not just develop, but to also maintain the program. And the second thought is a concern of kind of cart before the horse. But the first sentence in the second paragraph says, we'll provide a comprehensive suicide education program within the context of approved curriculum. And I hear right now there isn't any approved curriculum because that's what SOPA is working on. And so I'd like to actually not have it tied to approved curriculum, but to say we will develop it and we'll make sure it is consistent with curriculum when it's developed, but we'd rather be doing it now, not wait for it to be developed by OPI. And since it's only a recommendation, I think it's a great idea to require annual, I don't know if anyone else agrees, but I think it's a great idea to have this training be afforded to everyone annually, as opposed to two hours every five years. So those would be my suggested changes.
Can I ask a clarification? So what I'm hearing is that there seems to be consensus on annual training, but that there's not a specificity as far as what that annual training looks like, or a minimum number of hours?
I think what I'm hearing Superintendent Thane say is that's better addressed in procedures rather than a Board policy, which allows for some, that's where we get the flexibility that sometimes we need, either if the law changes or we want to go above and beyond what's minimally required. Is that what you were suggesting as well?
Well, I think there's a difference between making training available annually and requiring that everyone take it annually.
Yeah.
Those are quite different things that have very different costs associated with them.
We catch that.
Yeah, in addition. So I think we'd be really careful about the making available versus the required to participate piece.
Trustee Newbold?
With the, with the make available language, I appreciate what trustee Kendall is saying related to parents. And just my own two cents, I would like to see something in here that this training that's being provided to administrative support staff and other school staff is also made available to parents, if there is some way possible to accomplish that.
So I'm hearing that training will be required for MCPS employees, but then made available to others? Is that?
Well, the, I think the way this reads is that it's made available to, it's made available, doesn't say to whom, but employee, employees working directly with students are required. I mean, that's how, so employees who don't work directly with students aren't required under this wording. And, you know, it, it would have to be figured out in the procedure. I mean, nurse, school nurses obviously have, have direct contacts, so they would be included. I'm not sure about, you know, people who, who, well, I don't want to start making a list of different kinds of jobs in the district. But, you know, that's, but if there, I mean, I agree with trustee Newbold, obviously, that if there's some way we can also make it available to other people without any requirement that they participate, that would be-
I just want to make sure that we're being really careful. I don't know how, I, I think having more training around this issue is critically important. But when we make policy, that means that's something that has to happen. And we, I don't know right now what particular topics employees are required to take training annually on. I know there's a great deal of professional latitude for teachers on what advanced training they pursue in a lot of areas. And I don't know, I mean, that's, that's an area I don't know. And so how would this come across? What does this do in their contract as far as requiring this piece of time? Those are always issues. And I don't feel like, I don't feel like I have information to be able to say everyone needs this many hours this often. That's, that's where I think putting a requirement around number of hours here is, we have to be mindful of that, while at the same time stressing how strongly we care about this issue. I, there's, I think there's a little bit of need for more information.
So just a basic response. Teachers are contracted for 187 workdays. Typically, we see 180 calendar days of student instruction. On the elementary side, we see three of those PIR days are directed for parent teacher conferences, two days on the high school side. So we end up really with a minimal amount of time available, four days. This training is important. What we do out of teaching and learning is important. What we do out of technology is important. They're all important. This takes on a different level of importance, I think, when you're talking about human health and safety. And so granted, but I think the language to make it available every year, in my mind, is to make sure that we sustain the effort so that as we onboard new employees, we don't have a year or two where we don't provide training, and therefore new employees don't have the necessary training. So I think on a regular cycle, we could come back and do comprehensive trainings in each building, like we did last year. I wouldn't see us doing that annually, but I might see us getting all new employees together as part of an onboarding or an orientation for these trainings as well as others. I would also suggest with regard to the parent portion, I think as trustee Kendall referenced, we've got Project Tomorrow, we've got the United Way efforts, the community efforts on suicide. Certainly to collaborate with the city county health department and those entities to provide community education opportunities is important. I don't know if that onus falls solely on the school, but I think we need to collaborate and be part of that solution for the community.
Do you think you have enough direction? Too much direction perhaps?
I'm not entirely clear on the, whether the language needs to say that you'll require training annually, or whether it's made available training, or made available annually. Because I've heard a couple of different things. So direction on that would be appreciated.
Sure, I was going to do one. I want to say, now that we've had this discussion, and as Superintendent Thane just explained, that limited number of hours that are available, I think if legal counsel meets with the administration, they can think about, like, whether or not an hour number is best, having it as an annual training, or recommending that every employee receive the training at some portion of time. Because as we know with subs and teachers coming in, and there, there's all kinds of training that we have been discussing in other Board meetings where they need to get training. If they don't get, get it at the beginning of the year, we have to, as a district, make sure they get it. So do you think you would be able to work this out so that the next draft would be one that probably only needs a few tweaks as, as opposed to this bigger discussion? Since this is the first time we're seeing this?
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Megan, I know, or maybe, there's just, there's a term of art in the law where if you put something in policy which is really not enforceable, like, you know, helping parents receive the training, I forget what the term of art is, but it has no enforcement ability, and there's the liability issues and that. But if you could, and talk with Superintendent Thane, about whether it's appropriate to put it there, or more important to put it in the procedures, just in terms of who it's available to. Because if we put words in policy that we say we're going to stand behind, but in fact they're ineffectual because this is student curriculum-driven, maybe there's a different place to put it. But on the other hand, I support everyone that we want to reach the people who are really the most impacted by this whole issue. So trustee Smith?
More of a, less about what's in it and where it goes. We have, our 2000 series is for instruction, our 3000 series is for students. I notice this is student instruction, which I think is in the right thing for, for, or students, at least for 2145. But I also see that we have, where'd it go? 3422 Suicide Prevention, which already is a, an education program. And is this supporting that? Or, and that one's in 3000, I guess. I just want to make sure that they're not contradicting each other or anything like that.
I think that's a really good point to bring out. And just, because one of the things I noticed, this isn't assigned a 2000 or 3000 number in terms of where you'd look at it in the policy manual, so.
It got 2145.
Oh, 2145. Oh, yeah, there is. Sorry. I've been looking at it way too much to even look at the top front cover. So there's a seconded motion to have this go back to administration and to work with legal counsel to come back with another draft. So we're not adopting it as a first reading tonight, where instead with direction and some latitude with the direction, sending it back for revisions. And so is there any public or any other additional Board comment? I was just summarizing the motion. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to send the proposed draft back for additional work on language and, and process to work with the administration, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present and trustee McDonald this year's, at this point. And then we move on to the addendum to the agenda, which is new business, and it's the ballot for the Montana School Boards Association election and bylaw amendments. And although it has Mark Thane as providing the background information, I think since I wasn't able to stay for the meeting in billings for Mcel, but Ann Wake, who is now the president of MTSBA, could provide a little bit of background. Because what we've received is the ballot, and it is due on December 1st. And it has to be postponed by December 1st. Which is why we're adding it on to the agenda tonight.
So just so you all know, at Mcel, there's an annual meeting of MTSBA members. And at that meeting, there was supposed to be 51 representatives of school districts at the meeting for the business meeting. And only 43 school districts showed up, which means we didn't have a quorum. And because we're a larger school district, we get, our votes are based on how many students we have. And so I, I was the only one there. And I thought, well, I'm kind of glad that I'm not making the decision for all of you. I'd rather have input from all of you to say that you either are in favor of what is being proposed or what's not being proposed. And I think it's important for all the school districts in the state to be able to do this. Because what happens at that meeting is based, will go back and be a policy, if you want to say it that way, for the future of MTSBA. The things that are on this ballot that was handed out prior are things like, we did a house cleaning on our bylaws that changed the way we fill in positions for our elected officials. It was pretty nebulous as what was going to happen if we had an officer like the president not get elected to their Board. Because as, if you're not elected to the Board, you can no longer be an officer. Sorry, I don't mean to keep my back to you. So they, what they did was is they had a more, they presented a more smoother way of doing that, which is one of the issues that we have to vote on. Which is that instead of replacing it with a past- of replacing it with a past president that was still on his board, the president who's coming in would just ease into that position. Carol Jones was not elected to her board, she was president at the time, so in the new policy, I would have been, I would have taken over her, the remainder of her presidency from May until October, and then I would have fulfilled my presidency from October until the following October. So, which is a much smoother transition than to say we have to get nominations to come in and, and run for the presidency. The other is, they want to continue.
So, Ann, can I make a suggestion? If we can go down one, two, three, and four, and then have a discussion, that way we know, so, why don't you identify which amendment?
Well, the first one is the dues.
Okay, so, I think you were just talking about number two, right?
Right, about the bylaws.
Okay, so should we consider that one first, since Ann just walked us through why they were making that recommendation?
Right.
To change who takes over as president if the president can't be president anymore?
So, I, you need to decide if you want to, are in favor of it or not in favor of it.
Are there any questions of Ann? Are you guys looking at more information down there?
Yep.
And, so just to summarize, so.
You don't have to make a motion, we just need to come to a consensus as to whether or not we approve this or not.
Okay, I'd do it by motion, just because.
You want to do it by motion?
Yeah. Or, sure, you can ask me a question. I'll ask, Megan, can we make decisions by something other than motions and acting on motions?
It's not your practice to do so. I forgot to print out the addendum, and I didn't grab it over there, so, thank you. I was just looking at what they're asking.
They're just asking for approval or non-approvals.
I think you have to do that through a motion, then.
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, it's just, in the past, we've done that as well, in some, you know, it's past my majority of.
This comes up so rarely, it's just, you know.
Yeah, but it has come up at least once before.
I move that we support the MTSBA bylaw amendment as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess, on this one, we're pretty much there, but I'd like for us to hear Ann's recommendation, and then we would vote to support, to uphold Ann's recommendation. So, could we ask Ann for her recommendation?
She could just.
That was my question. Well, the thing of it is, is that if, we, this was a Mcel meeting, there wouldn't have, my recommendation wouldn't, would be what you all want to have, so, I, I mean.
Internal.
Huh?
You can have an internal recommendation, right?
Well, of course, I will approve that, because I think it's a much easier way of handling business in the future for them, so.
That's what we need to hear.
But I just, you know, if, if we were sitting at the Mcel meeting, and we had representation there, you would have a little clicker, and you would go, click, and you'd say yes or no, whether or not you approved of it or not, so.
I, but for us, we need help.
You need help?
Some of us more than others.
That would be my recommendation, is that the bylaws should be changed to reflect all of this, so that it's an easier process for the future.
And, since I've been to a few Mcel meetings and have known, and on occasion, that this has been a problem, where someone isn't elected in May, and yet they've got a term of office to continue to fulfill, and there is, there hasn't really been a really good mechanism by which to fill it, so I, just having, I didn't stay this year for the meeting, because I came back a little early, but in past meetings, it seems like there was great support for having a much clearer structure to have, not to have to have some kind of weird midterm election, when in fact, the lines of succession are fairly clear. So I would support the motion.
And I guess, maybe, maybe I didn't understand the discussion, so this, because I've been to the Mcel once, too, where we had the clickers, and we, and there was like a minimum, a maximum four for our district, or whatever. Is, is this procedure what we're voting on? I mean, is this going to be the way all the Mcels?
This is, from, from now on, MTSBA will practice a procedure of having the incoming president, like my, I was president-elect when this happened. I would become president and fill, fulfill the interim presidency, and then I would fulfill my own presidency into the future. As it stood now, we would elect a president, a new president again.
Yeah, I get, I get that part, right? I, I want to make sure that that's, is, is that all we're voting on, or are there?
Right, right now, that's all you're voting on.
Okay, so, so there's no, there's no, there's no bylaw amendment that says from now on, we can vote on bylaw amendments this way, as opposed to having to send four people to.
Oh, no, you need to come to the meeting.
Eureka, or Miles City, or Plentywood, not that there's anything wrong with those places. Or Missoula next year. I bet you we get a quorum next year.
Probably so, because the following year is a legislative year.
Where was it last year, or when they only had 41?
It's gonna, it was in billings. But that's another issue, I mean.
I know.
We're digressing, and the time is ticking away. So that's why I asked Trustee Wake to pull out just this one issue. So it's the item, voting item number two, which is MTSBA bylaw amendment, which modifies the line of succession to fix a problem that became apparent this last year. And so there's been a motion and a second to vote to support the MTSBA bylaw amendment as presented, and we've had board discussions, so is there any more board discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the motion to support the MTSBA bylaw amendment as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. I'm not getting ballots, sorry. And then, and, you know, I mean, this is unusual, but because there wasn't a quorum, each school board has to send back their recommendations now. So voting item number one is a dues revenue estimate for fiscal year 19.
And it's a 2.82% increase, is that not correct, Pat? And, and so it's going to come to $17,904.
And, if I can ask a question, I understand that it's tied in with OPA numbers, and it's actually a formula that has been followed in the past, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's a very predictable increase, because it's tied in with students and, is it inflationary costs, too?
It's tied to the increase in revenue statewide by schools. And so then that. So that, they tie the increase in dues to the increase in revenue from the schools around the state, and that revenue being generated through the general fund. So 2.83% was statewide, and that's our increase, so we are at 17,483, and now we're 17,904.
So any questions for Pat, or Ann, or Trustee Wake on this one? So is there a motion, either to support the dues revenue estimate as presented, or to oppose the dues revenue estimate as presented for fiscal year 19? Move, Trustees Smith?
I motion that we support the dues revenue estimate as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Kendall. Is there a board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
I, I guess, I didn't want to hear Ann's recommendation. On this, on this item, I think we need to take a stand. MTSBA just grows and grows, and I, even though maybe we have a 2.8% increase in the general fund, I don't think anybody thinks schools have more money this year than they had last year. And so it, it, regardless of how it's defined, I just think MTSBA needs to start trimming its budget, so I'm going to vote no.
Is there any other board discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the motion to support the fiscal year 19 dues revenue estimate as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is Trustees Wake, Newbold, Kendall, and McDonald, and all those trustees opposed to the motion, please indicate by raising your hand, and that's Trustee Beers, Smith, and Lorenzen, and so the motion carries. And so, now we move on to item number three, and Ann, if you can walk us through, I know that this was one of the items that I think Trustee Smith had indicated that at past meetings, one of the things that we use our little clickers to talk about is sometimes there are modifications to MTSBA principles and guidelines that are proposed either by the leadership from the organization, or by the executive staff, is this what is?
This is just, it says here, I have the, a copy of it, it says, "The purpose of this document is twofold. First, it is intended to provide a framework of governance for school districts throughout Montana. You, as a school board trustee, can review these principles and guidelines, and use them as a starting point for conducting business that fully develops the educational potential of each child in your district. Secondly, this document identifies key advocacy issues that MTSBA will pursue on behalf of trustees, school districts, and each student in Montana in the pursuit of educational excellence." And the first principle is, "School boards should align their effort and activities with the goal of fully developing the educational potential of all the state's citizens," meaning their students. And the, it, there's like, three or four of them that go on in here, you can all read them. There, they haven't, didn't make any changes to them per se, so, and they're pretty much the same, but they, we have to be approved every year, so that everybody knows what we're, what the guidelines are for the state association.
And, in terms of your experience serving on the board, are, have the principles and guidelines worked well?
Yes.
Are there any questions for Trustee Wake? Is there any motion, either to support the MTA, MTSBA principles and guidelines as presented, or to oppose the same? Or, are we abstaining on this one?
I move that we support it as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? I know that, when I was there last year, there was actually some good discussion in, in terms of aligning these guidelines and principles, and it was a pretty robust discussion, so that's why I was checking to see if they've been working well since, because there were some tweaks made at last year's annual meeting that seemed to be thoughtful and necessary. I can't remember, I think Diane and Ann and I were there last year, so, anyway. Any other board comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, all trustees in favor of voting item number three to support the MTSBA principles and guidelines as presented, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And item number four is the extension of school funding, resolution number one through the 2023 legislative session, and.
And that's the K-12 vision group, that they want to extend, it, it stops this year, I believe, and so that's going to be extended on through the legislative session of 2023. And Pat sits on that, the K-12 vision group.
And can I ask a question? So, as I understand, what they do is, they, they work together during non, and actually legislative sessions, but to put together a vision group, a vision of what they like, a coordinated effort from all public educators in the state to present to the legislature in order to further public schools' kind of general mission. So they do bring small school boards together with large school boards, and there's representation from all those groups.
And, plus, I think they have superintendents on there, too, don't they? Right, and clerks of other districts. There, there's a, there's a great representation on there.
Any other questions for Trustee Wake? Or I guess for Pat, since he sits on that particular group? Seeing none, then is there a motion to support the extension, or oppose the extension of school funding resolution number one through the 2023 legislative session? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, is her second? Seconded by Trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion? I'm sorry, huh?
My question was to support.
Oh, thank you, very good catch, because I, yes, thanks, thank you, Trustee Smith. So the motion is to support the extension of school funding resolution number one through the 2023 legislative session. Is there board discussion? Is there public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to support the extension of the school funding resolution number one, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees present, except Trustee Beers? Oh, including Trustee Beers. Okay, and then voting item number five is the election of the MTSBA's president-elect. It's either to support Rick Cummings, or oppose Rick Cummings as the MTSBA president-elect. And so, Trustee Wake, have you worked with this person in the past, or do you have any information for us about this person?
Rick's a really nice guy, he'll do a great job as the president when he's elected into that position in October of 2018. He has a lot of knowledge for the legislative, he testified several times. He's presently the board chair for the Cascade County Board, which is a small school.
Any questions?
Is it an option to make a motion to rewrite in Ann Wake?
I don't think she wants to continue to be president, like, for years, like, three years from now, too, since she already is, and we appreciate all your service, but, anyway, no questions, so is there a motion, either to support Rick Cummings, or to oppose Rick Cummings as the MTSBA's president-elect? Trustee Smith?
Motion to support Rick Cummings.
Is there any board, Trustee Lorenzen? Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, other than, it is nice that there is a mix of double A schools, smaller districts, in terms of leadership positions, because I think that makes the conversation you have at the leadership level really valuable, so. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to support Rick Cummings as MTSBA's president-elect, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present, and Trustee Decker had to leave, and so she's not here now, and she didn't vote on the last one either. And then, voting item number six is to either support Paul Finicum, or oppose Paul Finicum as the MTSBA's vice president. And, Ann, second question, I don't know if you've worked with him, or if you'd be new to.
Yes, I have, and he falls into that category of changing our bylaws, because he became president when another board member had to leave because he was running for another position, and so he fulfilled his presidency, and he never got to go through the, all of the, the different stations of the president, going up the line, and getting all that professional knowledge that he, that you attain by going through all these steps. So, he really is a, he's been on his school board for 14 years, and, and so has Rick, and they, he's been the chair of his school board for the last 12 years. So he is a very, a good guy to have on, and he, he sometimes stays focused, and sometimes he doesn't stay focused, so he's a, he, he really gives a good perspective as, from a small school district perspective, because he's from Culbertson, so.
Any other questions for Trustee Wake? Seeing none, then is there a motion to either support or oppose Paul Finicum as the incoming, or as the MTSBA's vice president? Is there a motion? Moved by Trustee McDonald, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Smith. And, so, it was to support? Okay, thanks for clarifying that twice now. And, so any board discussion? Other than I thank Ann for having the expertise to give us some recommendations in this matter?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you for taking this up for discussion, because I think it's important that we get input from all of you, rather than just one person. I think that you, the more you know about MTSBA and what it can do, the better off you are, and the fact that it has, has great professional development for all of us, that we should really be partaking in, I, I think it's important as well. We do, we ask our teachers and our staff to take professional development, and it's just important for us to do that, as it is for them.
Thanks. And, so, I forget if we've had board comment, but, not public comment, but we have a seconded motion, right, Lenora? Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the motion to support Paul Finicum as MTSBA's vice president, please indicate by raising your hand. And it's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then, I believe that's all the topics there, and as we always do, we have public comment at the beginning and end of every meeting, and therefore, item number nine on the. on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items, and it looks like there is none. So thank you for being patient tonight, walking through several things, and we're adjourned. Thank you so much.